All right, it is six oh three, July the eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three. I'd call this meeting at the Montgomery City Council in session at this time. Apologies for the late start. Still have some difficulties, but maybe we can get things worked out internet-wise. What did we do in the old days, right? Glad you're here, those in the audience and those tuning in. Thank you for taking an interest in our city. I'd like to ask that you silence any cell phones to avoid any information or any interruption in our meeting this evening. We do have a full group here on the council. And so with that, I'd like to invite everyone to stand for the invocation and the pledge to our flag. Heavenly Father, thank you so much for the blessings that we're able to see every day, for being our Creator who loves us. So we ask your blessings on our meeting, our families, our institutions, our city. Grant us wisdom as we go forward. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Salute to the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To the Texas flag.
I am the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
I have one, two, three signed up. I'll take them in the order that they were submitted to me. When your name is called, please go to the podium, state your name, address, your agenda item, or what you're speaking towards. And I've asked Stan to start keeping the time for me. So Stan, are you ready? You'll have three minutes. And if you need a little bit of time to finish a thought, then that will be granted for you. So first up is Julie Dennison.
I'm Julie Dennison, one one four Anna Springs. And I'm calling, I'm calling, I'm speaking on number three about the variance allowed to open a commercial business. First off, let me start out by saying we purchased our home eight and a half years ago in Buffalo Springs, and we were told the land behind us was residential and it would always remain the same, that there were no deeds on the land. And I understand that the people, you know, can't sell it now, but something could come up with enough money, they could get deeds to it and sell it and eventually make it a commercial strip in there. I think that would be a slap in the face to all the people that have lived there, the families that have lived there all these years, to end up making it commercial. And if the people that are living there now had the opportunity to do that, I'm sure they would jump at it. That's right in my backyard. I've heard when he purchased the house that we're talking about, I heard through the grapevine that he has a homestead exemption on it. And now he wants to run a commercial real estate office out of it. I believe he had started working in there, I'm not sure on that. But if, if he claimed it as a homestead with the intention of making a business out of it, that seems a little fraudulent to me. Evidently, he didn't do his homework and was just trying to pull a fast one over on us and thinking that once he got in there, opened his business, nobody would care. I care. He stated one time in one of the meetings that he wouldn't be able to sell the property. Well, he bought it. He's in real estate, he can sell it, he can rent it. I don't care. I just don't want a business in there. Eventually, some of the other places, maybe putting a strip center in, turning into a beer joint, a strip joint, bringing in dumpsters, which are going to attract critters and unwanted people in that area. I don't think it would be fair to grant this variance to him, because if you do that to one, you're going to have to let it, all of them do it. And all those little houses can turn into some kind of business, causing problems for us that live back there. I just asked that, you know, I know he, he didn't do his homework to know what he was buying, but that's not my fault. We bought our home to live there, it's our forever home. If you'll please take care of your Montgomery residence and not just one businessman, and deny this request, put it to rest for once and for all, because we've been going over and over this for a long time.
Thank you. Next up, Tony Noriega.
Hello, everyone, council, mayor, and Ms. Tony and Rebecca Noriega, one four two five nine Liberty Street. We just want to say thanks to everyone, the council, particulars such as Dave McCorkle Dale, T.J. Wilkinson, and many others that we have met that helps us, helped us both to acclimate to the city and as we move forward to get our business started. We just want to say thank you. We wanted to say, give a particular tag thanks to Officer or Lieutenant Joe Balmerez. We visited his office greater than a month ago, and I've never had a positive dialogue with an officer, much less a brotherly invitation, if you will. Anyway, we spoke with him concerning an issue, and he went way beyond his call of duty to assist us. And we just wanted to say thanks and give him a token of appreciation, because the correct answer he should have given us is, it's a city issue and, you know, and, and he did, he just, as a matter of fact, he's still working on the issue, and he updates us every few weeks. That's, that's beyond. So I just want to say thanks, he's not here today, but maybe, maybe the chief can receive just a token of...
The presentation is working.
But he's enjoying. So I present to Joe Balmerez on behalf of the citizens of Montgomery, at least two of us, but I'm sure everyone will explore how positive he is, in appreciation for his service and detailed attention to the needs of the public. We are gratefully indebted, Tony and Rebecca Noriega, July two thousand and twenty-three.
Thank you so much. Next speaker, Wafer, Abby?
Wafer.
Wafer?
Hello, my name is Wafer Ivy, and I am a resident of one oh one Dina Lane. It's the new subdivision at Town Creek Crossing. I don't have anything that is related to the agenda item, I'm just here to try to get some information, because we've been dealing with this since May and we're not getting anywhere. We're trying to put a deck and a pool on the backyard of our home, and it's an above-ground pool. We tried to talk with the permit department, and we kept going back and forth, because the lady that I spoke with said, your HOA doesn't allow it. The HOA says, oh, no, you just have to get the permit from the city. We, according to the lady that spoke with, the pool company called her that are going to install our pool, she said that we are the only residents of, city of Montgomery that ever asked for a permit for an above-ground pool. Nobody else have ever done it, and we are getting, no, we, we tried to ask questions, and we're getting no response. We have no answers for our questions of why we are required to have these permits. We were trying to do it the right way, and obviously, when you do the right way, it's just, you keep getting on limbo, nobody wants to answer our questions. And we tried to ask, who is the supervisor for the girl that, you know, we were talking to? We don't even know who her supervisor is. At some point, our pool company spoke with the girl, and she told them that our paperwork is at her boss's desk, but who is her boss? I have no idea. We have no idea. So if it is possible that you can help me out, figure out who we need to speak with and, and find some answers to our questions that we're just, we're just trying to figure out what's going on and, and why are we the only ones that the city is asking us to do all of this? And we are trying to do it the right way. We're, we're trying to be within the law and within the ordinance. We don't want to be fined and, you know, whatever is going to cost us a thousand dollars now is going to cost us ten thousand dollars on the, down the road. So I would appreciate it if you guys give me some names and phone numbers, email addresses, so that I can get ahold of whoever I need to get ahold of.
Thank you.
There's customers.
Thank you. Right there.
All right, under consent agenda, we have one item, consideration and approval of the revised minutes of the city council regular meeting, five twenty-three twenty-three. Any questions?
I'd like to move the minutes on item number one, on the consent agenda as presented.
Okay, we have a motion by Sarah. Second is by Cheryl. Motion's debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. All in favor of approving consent agenda item one? Say yes.
Yes.
If you want to oppose, say no. We will approve consent agenda item one. Consideration possible action, item two, on a parking variance request from Home Depot USA INC. Dot.
Number two is, will I have to repeat?
Sorry?
No?
Number two is?
How's it going? Go ahead.
All right.
Mayor and council, you have the request information in front of you. Again, this is a request from the Home Depot, which as you know, is locating, or their proposed site is near the, just west of the Kroger. You see some of the details here in terms of what they're required, the short of it is, or the summary of it is, is they would be required to have, I can't find it in my information, six hundred and four parking spaces for, to meet city code. They have proposed a total of four hundred and forty-two spaces on the site. Some of those are going to be used for rental equipment, seasonal storage, which brings the number of customer available spaces to three hundred and ninety-nine, so their total ask is a two hundred and six parking space variance for their store. You see our recommendation there, the staff's recommendation, is to approve variance with the conditions of the installation of the light at Buffalo Springs Drive and one oh five, screening of the rooftop equipment, which can happen through the landscape plan that's in your packet. Just a few edits on the type of species will ensure an evergreen screen and a hundred percent masonry exterior. And the piece I left out of the top bullet there that's related to traffic improvements is the improvements in Buffalo Springs from one oh five to Lone Star Parkway, to be built similar to Gardner Drive, which is a concrete street with curb and gutter and a center turn lane that would allow for turning in not only to this site from the south, but also to sites that are, you know, above and beyond, that we know are going to be developed in the near future, so we don't end up with traffic congestion. So with that, we happy to answer any questions. The developer team is here. What I had asked them to do was to go over their letter, that would just explain, you know, kind of the rationale on why they're asking. I've got a few photos that I also want to put up on the screen that shows the type of store that they proposed to build. There's one existing now at I-ten and Sudamont down in Houston, as well as the renderings that they have. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Corbett and Mr. Tate.
Good evening, mayor and city council members. My name is Jordan Corbett. I work with Kinley Horn. I represent Home Depot as their site development coordinator. I've also got Renee Jansen with Home Depot, she's their senior real estate manager, and also Clay Trozo, who is with Property Commerce, he's their broker on the project. Renee and I are both local to Atlanta, where Home Depot is headquartered and based, and then Clay is here, local to Houston. So we're here today to ask for relief in the city's parking standards, to bring a new Home Depot similar to what you see on the screen, as Dave mentioned, down in I-ten Sudamont, over just west of the Kroger, right down the road from City Hall here. The main reason that we are going to be needing relief from the parking standards is due to topography on our site. If you look at the, the site plan, which Dave, I don't know if you're able to pull up the site plan, but if you look at the site plan that we have, from the southeast corner of the property up to the northwest corner of the property, there's about a thirty-foot grade change from the drive aisle down the southeast corner that connects us to, you know, over near where Kroger is, and then up to the northwest corner where Buffalo Springs Drive is. So basically, you have the height of Home Depot already and topography laid up across the land that Home Depot is looking at. And so in order to level the site out and then, you know, still be somewhat economical and feasible with their layout, that's what the site plan that was created to, again, try to minimize retaining walls wrapping around the entire site. So it's kind of balanced a little bit, and we're using some, the eastern part of the property between Home Depot and Gardner Drive to help, you know, carry some of that elevation, and then there's also a slope up to Buffalo Springs Drive. The current property was already platted, and the zoning allows the home improvement, you know, retail use. And so, you know, from a zoning perspective, the only thing that we would, you know, need to request to build the Home Depot and develop it is a parking variance. Again, one mainly due to topo, but then, you know, there's nothing in the zoning that precludes us from building the size of building that Home Depot would want, which is their prototypical hundred and eight plus or minus square foot building with a twenty-eight thousand square foot garden center. So totals close to about a hundred and thirty-eight thousand square feet. If you took the site that we have laid out, the site plan, which may or may not be in there...
I have, it's all pages, twenty-two and twenty-three of your package.
Yeah, so you may be able to see that. If we, you know, take any development, you know, exclude Home Depot from it, lay out the site the way that we've laid it out, again, to try to be the most efficient and economical that we can be, the maximum size building with the number of parking that we're able to generate is ninety-five thousand square feet. So it's less than, you know, most, you know, big box retail, which would be over a hundred thousand square feet. Again, you know, what we're asking for is the relief of the parking due to topography. But also, Home Depot does do their own parking calculations, they have their own internal models. And so the number of parking spaces we are providing, Home Depot is comfortable with the number of parking spaces that it will serve, you know, this site well. It won't be overrun, people won't be able to find parking spaces. And as Dave mentioned, there's a, you know, a number of parking spaces that we allocate for various uses, trailers, sheds, you know, the typical things that you would go to a Home Depot store and see out in the parking lot. And we try to be upfront with that, with our site plan, and say, this is what we intend to reserve or allocate for parking out in the parking lot. And then that way, you know, we can't control when people bring it back that it always goes, always goes right in the right spot right away, but at least associates are able to, you know, move them around and put them where they're supposed to go. It also allows, you know, city's code enforcement to then go and say, hey, here's your approved site plan, you know, you're doing, you know, more trailers than you should be, or, you know, you've got, you know, rental vehicles out in the middle of the parking lot, and they should be over here off to the side. So Home Depot wants to be upfront, and the store manager should take the operating restriction site plan that gets created for that store in a buy-bye. Another thing to mention is that Home Depot, when they lay out their parking, is they like to use nine by nineteen foot parking spaces instead of nine by eight, eighteen, which is the city minimum requirement. If we use nine by eighteen, it actually increases the number of parking required. So instead of six oh four, I believe it jumps up to the six twenties or so. So using a different parking space, just based off how the city calculates their, their parking minimums, is how we get to the six oh four number. We also like to use twenty-five foot drive aisles. Again, Home Depot does serve, you know, customers and residents, but it's a very heavily pro contractor-based type of, you know, retailer, I guess. About, I think, eighty percent of Home Depot's sales at each individual store typically come from the pro and the contractor, not from city residents. So what they try to do is accommodate their parking to better serve the pro customer, so you have a little bit longer parking space, because most people are driving trucks, and then you've got a wider drive aisle to make it easier to pull in and out. Also, on the site plan that you can see, we now are revising a lot of our site plans for new store developments that, again, favor the pro customer, where you, you know, you typically go, I think you, if you went to the one in Conroe, I drove by it, and I think there's, you know, eight to ten spaces out in front of the lumber, you know, canopy that is allocated for the pro customer, and they're, they're identical to the rest of the parking. But on the site plan, you can see, we've angled a whole row of parking that's forty-five degree angle that allows for... Do I have a time limit?
No.
It's a bird, as far as I know.
I don't know why it does that, but it does it.
Time keeps it moving.
So, so we have rotated a whole row, angled it forty-five degrees. It allows for easy access for, you know, we also have a dash line in the middle, so you can do two head-in vehicles, and so I think you still get twenty-something spaces there in that row. But it also allows a, a pro contractor to pull with a trailer behind, pull directly through, all the way through, and then they can, you know, stack and have their trailer back behind the, the truck and then easily maneuver off. So again, yes, we are, we're asking for topography, but, you know, Home Depot has their own calculations. They have twenty-four hundred stores across the entire country, in Mexico and Canada, where they have the data, that they feel comfortable that, you know, the amount of parking that we're going to be able to provide here will sufficiently work for the site. So separate, and I'll try to be quick, because I know there's other agenda items, but separate from just the parking variance, kind of going to the, the conditions that Dave mentioned, you know, Home Depot, we've been made aware of the conditions that we've been asked, and I, and I would like to kind of just touch on each one of those here quickly, and we also are here to answer any questions. So the first one was the traffic signal at Buffalo Springs Drive and Eva Street, or State Highway one oh five. You know, our understanding is that Tech Dot has been, you know, working on that signal for a little bit of time, and Home Depot is not the only development that is triggering the need for the signal. Now, Home Depot has allocated some budget to, to construct the signal, because it would benefit Home Depot. If you kind of scale, you know, high-level zoom way out, all the truck traffic anticipated to make deliveries for Home Depot is pretty much going to come from forty-five over in Conroe and then come one oh five, and a lot of it will come up Gardner Drive, which is already existing, over to our, our, our loading dock, which is on the northeast corner of our property. Now, there are some operations in loading that, for the lumber department, they'll come and go all the way across the back of the store. There's a lumber pad that will be, you know, kind of back there, offload for the lumber, and then they will come out, and then we do show a, a little arrow that goes to Buffalo Springs and then down to the, the intersection there, and again, to take the one oh five, probably go back east. So the, the traffic signal, yes, it would benefit Home Depot in controlling the traffic and allowing the, the truck traffic to get out of their sites for when lumber, you know, deliveries come. But that is something that, you know, we also see that benefits the city greatly too. So the second one is the, the roadway improvement. So the ask is for Home Depot to reconstruct basically the entirety of Buffalo Springs Drive. It's about a mile long. That is one thing that, from Home Depot's perspective, we, we don't see that it benefits us. We do see, obviously, that it would benefit the city of Montgomery greatly, and we acknowledge that. But as far as the specific, you know, benefit also to Home Depot, the only portion of Buffalo Springs that we anticipate that would benefit Home Depot is from the signal to that first driveway connection that is actually going to be installed by Discount Tire, who is currently, I think they're permitted already at the city, and they're going to be constructing that, you know, kind of southwesternmost out parcel there. So that is something that we would like to, you know, consider for future, you know, continue the conversation, I guess, as far as what the city would want Home Depot to do from improvements to Buffalo Springs Drive, and also to see if there could be some form of, you know, incentive or reimbursement agreement that we could enter into, that Home Depot could, you know, recoup over a period of time through sales tax or some other mechanism. The landscaping, you know, from working with staff, that is not something that Home Depot sees any concern with. We already have a landscape plan, we already show a number of plantings along, which I think the landscape plan is included on subsequent pages as well. So there is landscaping along Buffalo Springs Drive and along the northern property line, and just simply moving some of those trees further up the hill and, you know, picking the right species that are evergreens and height of the trees, that should provide the adequate screening needed, needed to, that, you know, you're coming down Buffalo Springs, you're not looking right at the rooftop of Home Depot. So that's something that we can work on, a revision with staff on. And then the facade, the ask is a hundred percent masonry or stone facade to the building. From our perspective, the Home Depot property, or the, the property was already platted and already zoned appropriately, so it already allowed the use and allowed the, the elevations, or there was no specific requirement from an elevation perspective in the zoning of the property. So Home Depot, for a number of reasons, would like to continue with the store that is, you know, constructed down at Sudamont and I-ten, which is their brand-new prototype, you know, state-of-the-art, the newest and brand is, you know, shiny toy that Home Depot has to offer. That's what they're bringing to, to Montgomery. It's nothing, you know, bottom-of-the-line, you know, design elevations or anything. What they've done is take some of, you know, looking at other retailers like a Costco, who has changed their, their, I guess, construction to a different type of building that allows them to construct it quicker. So taking some of the portions of the Costco, and obviously, Home Depot's not a Costco, they don't want to look exactly like a Costco, but as you can see, taking some of that type of material that allows them to construct it quicker, but then also accenting the building around the columns and, you know, in other, other ways that would allow it to still be striking and appealing to the resident or to the customer. So our ask would be to continue moving forward with the elevations that Home Depot has as their prototype, which again, are the brand-new ones that they are asking for, along with having some of the masonry and stone as like the accent portions of the building. Also, from just, from a timing perspective, Home Depot is really striving to open the store at the end next year. So October of two thousand and twenty-four is when they want to be grand opened and be open for everybody to, to come against, especially the contractors. And so any changes at this point in time, because we were moving forward after communicating with staff and understanding that we are zoned appropriately, our elevation should be allowed, we have been moving forward, you know, with both civil design and then also architectural design. So any changes at this point in time to the, the elevations of the building will increase the project schedule. Likely, we'll push it from October, and just from experience and not being able to, you know, be very successful opening stores in November, December, and January, the next, you know, date would be February of the next year. And from a publicly traded company, that's not something that they would, you know, ideally want to do at this point in time, is communicate, we're having to push this store, you know, out a whole fiscal year. So that's kind of our take on, on some of the conditions that have been brought up. But me, Renee, Clay, we're all here and love to answer any questions that you have.
I just want to give a clarification on traffic, because traffic's a big thing to me. Buffalo Springs is a major thoroughfare, and it's going to continue to be a major, major thoroughfare. A lot of attention to me, staff-wise, negotiations going forward is heavily there for me, because there's, there's three ways to go in and out from one oh five, and I can promise you, anybody loaded down is not going to see a promising situation on one oh five. There's going to be a light eventually there. If you're going to turn left, good luck, it's not going to happen. It may not even be able to happen with Tech Dot, because I don't know what It may not even be able to happen with Tech Dot because I don't know what they're going to do. So it's going to route it to Buffalo Springs is my point, and that's why I'm trying to get fortified as much as I can all the way to Buffalo Springs. They're going to have to hang right, go around, use the loop on that side, go to that light to get out to Conroe. So that's why I'm really anxious to that. But again, it's what can you give to us and we'll give back to you type thing, but I'm really strong on that. I really want that, all the way to Buffalo Springs if I can. That's my wish.
You mean reconstructing the entirety of Buffalo?
If it's possible. If it's possible, that's what we'll call negotiations, right? But that's why I want to go, because they're not going to go and stop at discount. I don't know where we are on discount, but the same thing there, they're going to be a huge plus for us, right? Lots of traffic too. But again, where they're going to go? They're going to go on Buffalo Springs, they're going to Mump Star. So...
Sure.
Any other questions?
So what was the, so your reasoning behind not wanting to screen with air conditioning is because you're going to plant some trees and hope they grow?
No, we can plant trees and work with, you know, Dave, who is a registered landscape architect, and pick the right species of trees that will be evergreen and space them appropriately and put them, you know, up along Buffalo Springs, which is the high point of the entirety of, around the Home Depot site. And, you know, that will provide more than adequate screening because if you, if you don't put the landscape screening there and you just put the air conditioning screening on top of the building, then you're still going to see everything else that's around there. And so our thought is if you put enough adequate screening via landscaping, then, you know, as you're coming out Buffalo Springs, you see the landscape screening until you get down to a certain portion, then you'd be able to see Home Depot. But you're not coming around the corner there, and then you're sitting there looking right at the top of everything, as well as everything going back behind the store.
So you're from Georgia, so I'm not going to expect you to know this, but when Texas droughts, I don't care how much you water it, it's going to die.
I mean, I'm a civil engineer by trade, I'm not a landscape architect. So I would have to, you know, talk with a local and, you know, the landscape architect who prepared the landscape plan and work with them to figure out, you know, what species of tree would be drought tolerant, but then also be able to, you know, be the best.
Any others? Okay. Do we have a motion?
I guess I do have a question.
Okay.
If you make a motion to approve and accept, you know, basically all the conditions that are laid there before you, what would be the next, I guess, the approved parking variance would have those conditions that the Home Depot would be held to doing every single one of those conditions? And so if there are future conversations that we can have about Buffalo Springs, if there is a cost sharing or reimbursement or any type of agreement that we could enter into, how would that play into account with the approval of this, with those conditions?
I'll defer to the board.
Then you, once you guys approve anything with conditions, the advocate can always come back and ask you to revise those conditions, relieve them of those conditions. But until that happens, those, that decision is going to be contingent upon that meeting those requirements. So yeah, the short answer is they can come back and...
I would say, I mean, from Home Depot's perspective currently, completely redoing all of Buffalo Springs Drive, if that is imposed upon Home Depot, that probably kills our project.
Okay.
Is economically infeasible for Home Depot to carry the weight of that.
Never know till yet.
Right. That's why, before we approve anything with conditions, I was allayed before I have to come back again, which I'm happy to do, I just wanted to go ahead and, you know, be upfront with you, Mayor, and City Council.
But you are willing to go to where you expressed to the edge of discount?
Yes, I mean, that seems reasonable to us.
And just a special heads up, I'm just telling you, all those trailers are going to go that way.
Sure.
So your openings and everything, especially with five...
Once the signal is installed, yes, understood. Are there any questions or comments on the facade of the building? Because that's another item that does drive up the cost of the project that Home Depot would have to take a look at, how that affects everything related to their project moving forward.
So you're saying you don't want to do any of these conditions?
I didn't say that.
What are you saying?
I said facade in particular, anything that touches the building at this point likely will push the schedule out of October of '24 into February of '25. So that's why we're trying to work with, you know, Dave and staff on the landscaping as part of a mechanism for screening, because that is something that we can do outside of design of the building that affects, one, cost of the building, but then, two, timing of redesign of portions of the building that, again, push the schedule out. But then also the facade, that is something that, one, substantially drives up the cost of the building, that could add half a million to a million dollars to the price of the building, and then also pushes the schedule out because of redesign. So it's really the facade of the building and the, you know, specific things on top of the building to screen for the rooftop equipment. Rather, we'd do it via landscaping and then doing what we can economically for the reconstruction of portions of Buffalo Springs and then doing the traffic signal.
Any motion that the council wants to make, I will entertain that.
I'll make a motion to table.
Okay. We have a motion to table, a case?
I'd like to have a conversation with Gary and the council on negotiations.
Second?
Second is by stand. The motion is debatable, menable, requires majority vote on a favor of tabling.
Well, when would this come back? If you table it?
In the past, we have tabled it to a specific date, and we have, but we don't have to do that evidently with...
Well, you don't have to, but I'm asking, when would it come back?
So do we have time to have a workshop between now and next meeting?
Could have a workshop before the next meeting.
Okay. So in two weeks?
Yes.
So we want to make that stipulation or...
The second meeting in July.
To the second meeting in July, I don't have the date till it's eleven, at fourteen, has to be twenty-five.
Twenty-fifth?
So the motion is to table until July the twenty-fifth. Second is by stand.
I'll go don't accept that.
Seal. Any further questions or discussion?
I have a problem with the...
All right. All in favor of tabling item two until July twenty-fifth, say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed, say no, and we will table item two until July twenty-fifth. Thank you, sir. Item three, public hearing and consideration and possible action on an ordinance of the city of Montgomery, Texas granting a special use permit to Evan Baloo for the use of 14640 Liberty Street, Montgomery, Texas, 77356, for a professional real estate office, establishing certain terms, conditions, and limitations, providing for penalty severability and effective date. It is six forty, and we will enter into a public hearing at this time. Anyone?
I'd like to say that I live backing up to those properties.
Okay.
Except that I've been in every meeting stating that I am not in favor, I understand there was a map presented that the council never accepted. It's an idea, potentially in the future. And I think, I mean, we talked about, yes, at one point, I think it'd be great to have lots of houses with different boutiques and restaurants and that there, but I don't think that were there today. And I am, I'm asking the council to not approve.
May I speak, Mayor?
So I have a little bit to say, but first I'd like to respond to Ms. Dennison. A lot of what's said today is about me and my reputation, and so I looked at some dates, and I closed on the property March seventeenth. I printed the application on March first, so the, I don't know where the information came from that this was my homestead, or I'm here voluntarily through due process to try to do everything the right way. That's the only reason I'm here today. No one taught me doing something I wasn't supposed to. I'm here to try to be a part of the town and part of the community, be a business in good standing with the city. So I will say that you don't have to like what it is.
I understand what it is to you.
No, I understand, but when that's said, like I said, all I have at the end of the day is my word and my reputation, so. And then from there, I'll digress. Mayor, council members, thank you again for allowing me to speak. As you all know, I am Evan Baloo. My company is called the Evan Baloo Group. I think that part is important to mention. It's important because today we're discussing considering to grant a permit to use a piece of property in the city limits for a use that is currently not allowed. That use will be tied to that name and that name alone, my name. I understand the subjectivity of the use of this property. The council and the citizens have mentioned their concerns, and I know in my heart that none of the things that the citizens are afraid of will be factors at all. You see, the request I'm making is for an eight AM to four PM professional office where individuals work from a desk and a computer and occasionally gather for a meeting. There are at least four real estate offices in downtown Montgomery. And I assure you, their workplace and their work practices go almost unnoticed. That is essentially the same to be said for what we wish to accomplish at 14640 North My family moved to Montgomery in 1998. It's been my hometown, it's my children's hometown. I've brought numerous clients to live in this great city, and I have those that work for me that live in this great city. I served this city for eight years as a firefighter with the Montgomery Fire Department. I'm still a public servant to this city in this area in Magnolia. This city is my home and a place I want to run my business. I take pride in where I'm from and I'm proud of where we're headed as a city and as a community. We at the Evan Baloo Group are primarily residential real estate agents. That means the community of Buffalo Springs are our customers. We simply want to be rooted as professionals working in downtown Montgomery. My team and I want to be in downtown so we can get involved with our community. I and my company share a passion with this council and that's seeing that Montgomery remain to be one of the best places to live in the great state of Texas. So what would happen if council voted tonight to approve my request to grant me, Evan Baloo, a special use permit? The only physical changes to the property would be a sign, whether it be mounted on the building, or a monument similar to that of the watersheds, a fresh coat of paint, white mostly, with a black trim, and a nice big Texas flag to keep Texas history, the removal of a dying tree, and with the blessing of council, more logistical parking. My team and I are willing and ready to follow any and all guidance and requirements of the city in accordance with setbacks, barriers, lights, and noise. We want to be a good neighbor. We want to serve our community. We want to be a part of this community. I will conclude with one very important point. A special use permit is granted to a person. I am that person. My reputation, my name, my history of public service, my business, and my family's good name are all on the line when I tell you what we plan to do. That this property would not be a detriment and a nuisance to the citizens of Montgomery. A special use permit can also be revoked. I hope that this council can see this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I have a question for you, Evan. If you wanted to be in downtown Montgomery, why didn't you buy in downtown Montgomery?
We've been in downtown Montgomery for the past year leasing. There is no properties, actually, at the corner, Caroline and Liberty, which was bought for professional use. The Cox Home Builders is going to use it for a corporate building. The only thing that was available on the market at the time was a chicken restaurant that was over five hundred square feet, that's still available to this day for over five hundred fifty thousand. My guidance came from a future land use map that was recorded with the city's website and their GIS mapping. On the application, you'll find that Mr. Easely for Watershed checked the same box, does this match our city's future land use? So all the logic and reasoning that I could possibly have to my means pointed that this was a good idea.
Right.
But I was not aware of other...
So I guess that's my question. If you wanted commercial property, you should buy commercial property.
Oh, yes, sir.
So from the outside looking in, it looks like I'm going to buy some residential property and see if I can't flip a buck and make it commercial, right? So that's what it looks like. Now, whether it is or not, that's fine, but perception is ninety percent, right? And that's what we perceive, that's what it looks like. Unfortunate, but that's what it looks like.
And I understand that. I respect that perspective, but also I almost rented the building across the street, I have the contract with Mr. Cheatham, and I looked up and told myself in five years I won't be able to, be able to buy anything in this town. Nothing that touches 105 or 149, the city's not going to let go commercial. And I want to be in downtown Montgomery. There's nothing else available. There's one thing we're short on, it's real estate in this town. And I do think that we can all agree that the subjectivity of the topic, and I, whether it's handled tonight or another night, I think that this is a good vehicle and a tool to get us down the road. That can be undone.
I disagree because I took a walk through the Westmont Building a couple of weeks ago. There are two of the four real estate companies that you're talking about in that building. At the very end of the building, there was a vacant office space. I don't know if it's available for rent or not, I just know it's vacant. Also, at Heritage Place, I've been going by there for three years, I haven't seen any movement on that building at all. I see a bunch of empty office spaces that are tied to 105, which is a very busy intersection. And I think that would be an ideal place for a real estate office, because you're going to get a lot of traffic going down there. So as far as space is concerned, and I think there's other alternatives, that's all I'm saying, you know, there's other alternatives.
And I hear you, Mr. Donaldson, and we were at that building, that room you were talking about at the end of Westmont for the year previous, and we outgrew it. We're fifteen strong. There wasn't another space in town that accommodated. The Caldwell Banker Office that's at the Heritage Place, they shut their doors because as ideal as that location is, they could not stay open. So I do understand and appreciate the perspective, and as I said, I, I looked at the town very hard and very, this was not a fly-by-the-seat-of-my-pants, hope it works out. I understand the risks involved. Like I said, I just hope to, someone in this room could understand my perspective and where I'm coming from, because I do understand, in absent of Ms. Dennison, I have not seen a large favor of opposition and miscountrymen. As I said, I want to be a community member. This isn't a for-profit. We're stewards, I have a servant's heart, reputation and servanthood, that's all, that's what's gotten me to where I am, where I was able to get to purchase the property. It wasn't by doing things incorrectly or inadvertently. As I said, I was in that building for a year. We outgrew it, and the feasibility of the size of our company, we didn't have the funds to buy a five hundred square foot chicken restaurant, because that was the only other thing on the market. Like I said, it, when you look at a lot of small towns in the area, whether it be Spring or Conroe, I say small towns, those are big towns, but towns with history and heritage, a lot of businesses are ran from homes, and I do understand the catalyst that I seem to be for this stretch of road, but as an outsider coming in with a propane place and a counseling center and a church, it seems pretty mixed-use already. I'm one track over from Planned Improvement District at the corner across from Jim's. It's not out of the realm of reality, and I think a lot can agree with that, and how I've made my decision up to this point has been based on logic. And my greatest opposition is emotion and fear, and all that I can assure you is that you're giving me a permit and I'm the one to be held accountable, a permit that can be revoked. We've already discussed the commercial zoning, and it was turned down, and respectfully so. If I knew about the special use permit, I would have used that as my vehicle. This was not an attempt to capitalize on this property. This was an attempt to continue to run my business and have a place to house agents, agents that bring people to the city, all these developments that are coming, these homes are being built. And I understand there's, from an outsider's perspective, there's other options, you join a different brokerage, go do whatever, but that is not the case. You join a different brokerage, go do whatever, but that is not the case.
Evan?
Yes, ma'am.
You do have a stellar reputation, and so I appreciate that. And what you said, this is not an attack on Evan Baloo or your brand and your name. But there's three points that I want to make. First, buying a place and then saying, okay, now I need you to change to this. I just, I can't figure out that logic of why am I going to buy something and then try to change it into something? Why not come to council first and get the blessing to say, what's the temperature here? What do you think? And then, based on what that sounds like, maybe then you go forward with the purchase. Secondly, I am having a problem with you continuous, it looks like you're continuously using it, and you don't have a permit. And I'm like, that's kind of a slap in the face, I feel like. Yeah, that's it, like that's on principle. And thirdly, you stated that you had already looked at properties next door to purchase them, to expand that commercial footprint, and then that's where the whole gas station thing came up, and strip center came up, because the fear was that now all of that strip is going to be potentially a strip center. You and I have discussed, I mean, the vision. I'd love to have that, but you've got to have collaboration to do that. You can't just have you and then, and I think you know the challenges of the deeds and all of that. So getting everybody on board would be, and everybody kind of were going to work in the right direction, or the same direction, would have been a great way to go.
Well, and I hear you, Miss Countryman, respectfully have to acquire the property. And I understand when you're talking about something that's off the market, there's some time. Time is not of the essence, and it was on the market, and I understand the risks involved. You know, one could look, on my side, could look at it and go, you're crazy to go through all this effort, and they're going to meet once a month in hopes that you're going to acquire this property after the fact you changed the use? No, that's what you do. It's like buying a piece of property and whatever Mr. Noriega plans to do with the Pecan Hills Forest, he didn't come to city and make sure, he can make sure the colors were painted and they matched before he purchased it. He acquired it. Now, it's a greater topic when you're talking about use and zoning, obviously, but you have to acquire the property first. I understand that. I'm going to walk out here tonight with my tail between my legs if the answer is no, but, and I live with those repercussions, but I have to do something. That's what's gotten me where I am in life, is by doing something. I'm not Silver Spoon. I'm blue collar as they come. I still work two full-time jobs, so I don't have a whole lot of time. I got three little ones, too, so I'm trying to put food on people's tables, and that's the 15 people, which, to respond to you about using the property, I don't think you've ever seen 15 cars there, and I don't think that anyone's ever held a meeting there or anything to that nature. And things are stored there, and someone that, a young lady that works for me, has been staying there, keeping an eye on the place. She's in between places. So it has been with use of within residential zoning, but at the same time, like I said, my good nature and goodwill is positive to, and I also, to respond to the greater footprint and purchase, acquiring more land, that was never said by me. I never attempted, we can look, I've never looked to acquire. What I did say was, if we wanted to be worried about a footprint of a property being used for something like a gas station, I would look next door, a larger tract. This home already has, only has 28 feet between a residence and the property line. There's no, there's no other use for this property between setbacks, drainage, what's I'm really searching for what it is the council would like to see for me, and if I had some guidance on that, other than just bold face, either not in my backyard, not today, that is pretty ambiguous, and that would leave me some guidance as to what to do forward with the property and where the city stands on it. And I respect, like I said, tabling it or more conversations between Ms. Dennison and I, the property doesn't have to look any different than it is today. And if, in fact, I have been using it for the use that you think I have been, then there's been no inconvenience on anyone, and there's not been anything, if that's the case, if there's not been a detriment.
It's not an inconvenience, it's just a matter of principle and following the rules. That's all.
I understand, and I am following rules, and that's why I'm here. And I do believe that the commercial vehicle behind it and the fear that could, what could be, I understand. But with the special use permit within itself is designed to keep me within a box of use, and at the same time, you've got, and I don't, I mean this humbly, but you've got the future of Montgomery standing up. You're talking to you, that hopefully I am honored enough to stay on the same board as you. I understand I have to reside in the city, but if you want a good company in your town, whether it be Home Depot or the Evan Baloo Group, people that are going to go to the parades, the people that are going to donate to the school districts, and the people that are on the barebackers, we are them. We are your people. And we help people like Ms. Dennison, whether their, whether their house is on fire, or whether they want to sell it this week, we're going to help them and we're going to serve them. And that, and as much as Home Depot serves their customers, we do as well. So I understand the subjectivity of that stretch of road, but I do think that whether it be the MEDC or whomever, I don't know the vehicle or how it happens, but there is some conversation that should probably take place on what to do when this does arise in the future. And I don't, I'm very fortunate, I'm sorry that I have caused so much upset amongst the city, but I'm just trying to welcome people to the city and show them your home when it's on the market, you know? And I...
I think we understand. Does council have any questions specific before we close the session? Anyone in the audit wish to speak? Allen, do we need to close this in order to go into act? Is that correct?
You do.
Okay, so do I need a motion to do that? I don't think so.
No, you can close it.
All right, if there's no other comments, I think I have 6:59, and we have closed our public hearing. And now into item three, as possible consideration, possible action. Comments?
Mayor and council, you have in your packet the information, as you know, from the packet and the donor commission did consider the item and recommended approval of the S U P with following conditions, that it's issued only to the applicant and not to the property, that it require the same buffer setbacks and other regulations that pertain to commercial properties that are but residential areas in the city, and to allow the existing accessory shed within the rear setback to remain. Continuing on, the packet pages 27, 8, and 9 are the application itself. You see there, page 30 is the recommendation from the county zoning commission. The minutes are there for reference, if you needed the P and Z minutes. And then 35, if I can point you where the draft S U P ordinance starts. Page 36 is, again, those conditions. The three in the top of the box are the ones that P and Z had recommended. You see just kind of the standard conditions of any S U P would be down below it. I'll be happy to answer any questions or provide any more information that you have.
Council, any questions? None?
Dave, how long is the permit for?
It's a good point there. In item G, I put one year there is what staff would recommend. Certainly, you know, that gives you the time to ensure that it's working. Typically, on an S U P, I would recommend longer than one year. You know, just given the circumstances here, you know, test drive it for a year, see if it works. And then at that point, you know, when he comes back to renew it, you know, if everything seems like it's working all right, I would recommend three years, five years, something like that. Again, with the other conditions, that it's just granted to the applicant, so you know it's not going to change hands, and someone with a different set of, you know, ideas or commitment to upholding those, you know, the regulations or the conditions that are in the S U P would be there.
Any other questions, discussion? All right, it has no motion to...
Whoa, whoa, whoa. I got to get my computer working right. Okay, now where are we?
Do we need a motion?
Motion on item three.
I make a motion to deny the special use permit?
Motion by Casey to deny. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, it was by Sarah. The motion's debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. Any further discussion? Okay, the motion is to deny on item three. Already said the debate will not there. All who's in favor of denying, say yes.
Yes.
All in favor of approval, say no.
No.
So we 4-1 will deny the special permit. Item three is denied 4-1. Item four, consideration, possible action on the application for a city alcohol beverage permit for Ryan Liquor.
Okay, this is, this is actually my item. I have an applicant come in December. You'll see in your packet, Mr. Teck from Ryan Liquor came in to apply to a T A B C permit. Part of the T A B C requirements, she's had her path, the C secretary signs off on it to say that it's permitted use after she's checked with the zoning administration. And then he takes a call on the county and then submits it to the T A B C. On our application, they are required to come back to us once they receive their T A B C application. Mr. Teck had a whole process with a previous agent that was working for him, and he eventually was, I gave him some information and a contact I knew at the T A B C, so he could get in touch with a reputable agent. The agent brought the documentation in to me. I signed off on what I was supposed to. Our ordinance does need revising, and Gary and I are working on updating our ordinance to bring to you, but we're only a handful of cities that don't have, that allow the city council to approve the liquor permits. So the agent overmissed, over stepped that mistake, so that's why it's on the agenda. My initiative has been opened as Ryan Liquor has heard it possible to reach that out.
Good question. As mayor for four years, we never had this issue, and there were plenty of places that opened, and all of a sudden now, this is the second one. Is it the ordinance? What are we doing? What's the...
Ordinance, exactly.
But nobody else, it's never been an issue before.
Respectfully, we don't have more than two, three applications per year, the new businesses coming in. T A B C in 2021 did update their regulations, and they updated all of their classifications of codes, and that caused an awful lot of confusion, like it feels like other cities are having the same problems. They have taken this malt, malt ale, and made that into beer, and so it has caused a lot of consternation and a lot of confusion between applicants, and our ordinance is working now how it is. So we're not clear, it's not clear and precise for applications.
So I, the representative, Representative Troy was, he called me, and I visited with him for quite a while, to understand why there was such a miscommunication, and it's basically because our ordinance is a little backwards right now, where she signs off on it, then they take it to T U P C, then they're, in everybody's mind, that makes sense, right? The city signed off, but our ordinance says that now it has to come back to council.
I think, because probably when that ordinance was written, and I'm guessing, because I went and read it, is like, I guess the city wanted to make sure everything was done, all of the proper permits were collected, and they come back and show us. That's what I'm assuming.
I visited with Gary about it briefly. All we need to do is just rearrange. If we want to continue to have city council approve, we just need to get it on the agenda and approve it before Nikki signs it, then they go get the license, and they're going to marry it. So, and it shouldn't be a really hard switch on the ordinance.
Absolutely. Because T A B C needs to see it first before this, the city needs to approve it, doesn't it, to T A B C?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So it goes, it comes, the application comes here first, or they get the application?
Currently.
Okay.
We're opposing, hopefully, that when they come with that T A B C application, I need to be scheduling it for on the agenda, so you can see the city application and the T A B C application at the same time.
Good.
Yep.
That's the way we have done it in the past.
The way I understand most of the cities I work with do it, is it goes to the city first and then the T A B C.
Yes.
And then, and then once they have their T A B C, they're going to go, and everybody's happy.
That's the way we do it.
Right. That's because they think once they get the T A B C, they're in business. Instead of coming back here. I think Gary's going to address that in the future.
Get it more streamlined.
Yep. Sounds good.
Okay. I move that we approve the city alcoholic beverage permit for Ryan Liquor.
I'll second.
Wow, we've got three.
I heard Cheryl, I believe, second.
Okay.
Sorry, Carol, you lose again? No, it's good. All right, motion's debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. All in favor of approving item four is stated. Say yes.
Yes.
If you want to oppose, say no, and we will approve item four as stated. Item five, consideration, possible action regarding the certificate of substantial completion and certificate of acceptance for the downtown sanitary sewer rehabilitation project.
Good evening, mayor and council. We've discussed this project many times in the past. This is the final paperwork for the downtown sanitary sewer rehabilitation project. What is in front of you is the certificate of substantial completion. They have addressed all of their punch list items to our satisfaction. There were some items identified at the final. We've reviewed everything, and it has been, it has been sufficiently addressed. What else is before you is the certificate of acceptance and, as well as beginning the one-year warranty period for this project. We have no objections to proceeding with these documents.
Okay, any questions? Entertaining a motion on number five.
I move that we accept number five as presented.
Motion by Sarah, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by stand. The motion's debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. All in favor of approving item five as stated. Say yes.
Yes.
If you want to oppose, say no, and we will approve item five as stated. Okay, let's see. This particular one, is it ready to even read?
So mayor, we're, I talked to the chief, we're, we don't have the ordinance in an adoptable form for y'all tonight, and I know that some of you may have some questions about the ordinance, so if it's okay with y'all, we can just discuss it tonight and we'll bring back that ordinance. Get your feedback and bring that ordinance back to another reading.
And the yellow is just kind of the items that we're up to, we're to discuss or to change or to consider?
Yeah, I'll defer to the chief on changes. It's just we don't, the ordinance is ready, it's just not in a form for you guys ready to approve. So we've got...
Yeah, I'm sorry, I was outside. Mayor, council, state has made some changes, and in order to keep our ordinance up to date with those changes, we've went in and made some changes on that. The biggest change is that the golf carts in any of the ATVs are going to have to be registered with the state, and...
So license plates.
Mm-hmm. Right. And the only exception to that would be, would be if that vehicle belongs to a municipality, a state or a county, then it doesn't have to. But if it belongs to an individual, it's going to require whatever the state law is, which means it has to be registered with the state. It has to, you still have to have a driver's license, and you have to have a license plate on it.
So...
So those are the changes that are really going to be made. Yes, ma'am.
So the golf cart sticker that we have now from the city of Montgomery?
Yes, ma'am.
It's not good.
It's not good.
It's no longer any gift.
It's not grandfathered in?
No, ma'am. We'll, what you have, what you have today... Uh, we'll, what you have, what you have today are the type of vehicles and it tells you about, we've had the registration forms in there as well. We'll make this transition for everybody as easy as we can. That, that application that you see in there, you can either do it online, we'll have it, put it on the city website as those changes go forward. It's not just us, it's, it's all the cities because they just, they just changed that to where it had to be registered with the state.
Is it, do we pay the amount like a regular license plate, what am I going to get when I go?
Well, we were charging here, state, you won't, we won't be charging those amounts to, for the golf carts, you won't charge, won't charge those amounts for the golf carts. I think we were charging...
Twenty-five.
For the permit, how much?
Twenty-five?
Yeah, twenty-five, so it won't be...
And so I'm going to go and I'm going to get a license plate?
Yes, ma'am, what you're going to do is you're going to send off the application.
And mine's old, it doesn't have a place for a license plate, so just stick it on there?
It's a pitch line.
Mine is, mine is guaranteed grandfathered because it's so old.
There's no exception to that rule.
What happens if I don't get it?
If you don't get it and you're on roadway, you'll be subject to fines.
I'm just usually on College Street. Why don't I? And they could see my sticker as plain as day. It looked like this was back in 2019, we're just now finding it?
Well, legislature...
That our ordinance didn't up to par?
In this year's chief meeting, legislature went back in and redone these things again because they made some more adjustments to it this year. So with the registration, because there was a hundred police chiefs in that room and nobody had made that change until it says, okay, now it's time for you guys to make the change. And so we have to update those ordinance to make those changes.
So Chief, I'm at, it also says that you have to have, you know, brakes, license and everything, and a, and a turn signal. What if you don't have a turn signal and you still do it the old-fashioned way?
If you got that license plate on there, you're registered, just stick your hand out, it's all right.
That will suffice.
But, because yeah, some of these golf carts, I know, I've seen some of the golf carts that they don't have the stickers on. A lot of the master plan communities, it's, it's a different, it's a different deal for them because they're in that master plan community, but when you start driving those vehicles on, on roadways, that becomes a different...
Well, is, is the police department going to inspect ours, my golf cart has the sticker permit number one on it.
Keep it on.
No, we will...
And I don't want to change it, huh?
And that was part of the deal, I know people were coming up and we were inspecting them, and that's part of the deal, all that's out, that's, the state has taken over all that with the registration.
So we don't have to do that, I can keep my number one permit sticker. You have to draw, you have to take it somewhere so that them inspect it?
No, you don't...
I just tell them it's got all that stuff on it, whether it has it in them? I mean, I'm asking questions because I don't want to get trouble.
We will walk you through, I will personally walk you through with everything that you have to do to get yours changed over.
Where am I going to, I'm not going online, let's just get to that right now.
If you're not going online, we have...
I'm not going online.
If you're not going online, we have that application right there for you. Here's what we'll do for you, we'll take care of all that for you, all your paperwork and the whole thing. There you go, come back.
You just get it and bring it to me, tell me where I can pick it up at.
We'll take care of it.
I'm not taking, I don't understand this.
But anyways, the ordinance itself, we have to do some rewriting, can I take it?
Well, it's got to be an informed, you guys can approve, it just isn't, and that was my mistake that it got on the agenda, we'll bring it back to you with that all drafted up.
Okay.
Also, another change on that that's really kind of a major change is going to be the times and the period of time that those things can be driven. And due to, due to the accidents around the state with golf carts, that's changed to a daytime, it means the periods between one and a half hours before sunrise and then one and a half hours after sunrise. Defined in section fifty-one, fifty-one, four oh one of transportation code.
So that's on, on which streets?
Brake plate.
Which streets is that the...
That's going to be on any of the streets, even with a thirty-five mile, but it has to be, that's just the difference of the time you can ride it. Because we've had some people, you know, we have dancers up here, they, they drive their ATVs and their golf carts, so...
And now they can't do it, right? Even with headlights on. I mean, because you got to have the headlights on.
It's daytime, it means one and a half hours, you'll sunrise and then in one and a half hours, after.
And that's the state putting that in?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, the reason that we ask is that if you don't live in Montgomery, you don't realize how many people drive around town in golf carts, right? Everybody's in a golf cart, these little events we have, all the concerts, there's, there's...
It's getting to be a thing, not, not just here in Montgomery, it's getting to be a thing all over with these golf carts.
So there's going to be a lot of uproar when the first ticket is written, guy being out after dark, okay?
So Chief, when we, when we're going down to have supper at the steakhouse at eight o'clock, I can't take my golf cart?
Uh, not if it's dark.
Just pull this one down, we're in term of lights.
I know these changes are...
Don't go in the winter time because you're going to get in trouble. Just always go in the summertime. How are we going to tell people in Montgomery?
What we're going to do is, we're going to go through the steps of, first of all, we're going to put this on both our website and the city's website with the changes. Then we'll see if we can get those into your, into your, your utility bills to start getting that...
Make sure you write that it's state mandated?
Yes.
Yes.
Because I, I sure don't want. No, no, no. So I'm going to add to pollution by taking a car to my daughter's at eight o'clock at night or nine o'clock at night?
Just run from the Popeye.
My rock there doesn't go that fast. I can walk faster than that golf cart, you know? Oh, my goodness. Thank you, Chief.
Thanks for the good news, Chief, thanks, State.
Appreciate you.
Glad I didn't have to vote tonight.
Okay.
Oh, is there a grace period? Some said today?
Somebody gave her a...
It's called grandfather, don't you, that's what it is.
Do we need to do anything, actually, since it's on the agenda?
No, it's...
Put in, do it, take it.
No action, so, item seven, consideration possible action on accepting applications for open position on TMEDC Board of Directors.
Mayor and Councilors, note that we have an opening on the EDC, you see kind of the process that the city has used in the past and what this is, the action for you tonight is just authorize staff to open applications for it. There's no set time, there's a proposed timeline here on when, you know, you would be able to appoint someone, but there's certainly no one that would, that would say that you have to appoint someone at the time. But as in the past, we've left those application periods open for about thirty days, so you see kind of that reflected here.
If there's been an application already turned in, does it still...
I would think it would, you know, still...
Just have big insurance.
For it, I don't know if we'd have any, but certainly would, you know, they wouldn't have to reapply. Yeah, yeah, you know, we'll add that to the stack.
Okay.
So we're just...
Right, right, you know, what, you don't need a formal application or, staff don't need a, a formal authorization, we just didn't want to start taking applications without the council being there.
I move to authorize staff to proceed with the application process below for MEEDC.
Second.
Second, motion by Sarah, second is by Casey, motion's debatable, amendable, requires majority vote, all in favor of approving item seven as stated, say yes.
Yes.
If you want to oppose, say no, and we will approve item seven as stated. Item eight, consideration possible action on approval of construction plans for Montgomery Bend, section one, development number two-two-oh-three.
All right, good evening, as a reminder, this item was tabled at your last meeting regarding some more information. So in your packet, you'll see a timeline of events regarding this development, just to kind of remind everyone that, you know, this started with the original Esco agreement back in April of 2022. Went on through drainage impact analysis being approved in December of '22. Plan and zoning commission approved preliminary plots for both sections one and two, Montgomery Bend development on March 7th. And now we're at the water sewer drainage and paving plans of the utility plans for the development that were submitted to P&amp;Z and approved on June 6th and is what is in front of you tonight. Couple of questions that came up last night was clarification on location, so next two pages, on page ninety-two and ninety-three of your packets, you'll see the location next to Terra Vista Waterstone off of ten ninety-seven. Page ninety-three is a overlay of that showing the lot plan, the land plan that was approved as the... The land plan hasn't changed throughout the development process starting back from April of '22. Some questions that were asked at the last meeting were regarding, so location was one of them, we clarified in here. There was talk about a potential site visit, after discussing with staff and the attorney, getting all council members onto an active construction site from a liability standpoint, which is not ideal. So we, we did not hold a site visit out there, provided this additional information. We are out there, we have pictures during construction, we'll be providing those through our monthly reports. The other question was regarding drainage and specifically the culvert crossing at ten ninety-seven. And so what that is, is it a, I mean, it's an eight-foot by five-foot box culvert with concrete head walls, wing walls, that conveys the flow underneath the road, so not the bridge. The other thing that part of the development agreement, all of that drainage that goes along the back of Terra Vista and the detention pond is all owned and maintained by the utility district that was created over this property. So any erosion, that is the entity that's responsible and any damage caused by that erosion, that is the responsible entity or that is that utility district.
Who oversees that, the residents come and say, I'm seeing something, or who, is there a board body of that?
So I mean, it's, I don't have a specific grant in front of me, so the board of directors of that utility district will be, will be a five-member board initially appointed to those spots. And then as soon as there's residents within that district, they can run and be elected to that board, so it'd be the residents of that district.
So I guess my question is, if that, so you go there, this is a great picture, but none of those trees are on that property, it's all, so therefore, my concern is, you're like, this is not it.
Right.
But the drainage, if there's a drainage problem there, and so my understanding is trees keep, help keep water in the ground and where it's slick, it's causes problems. One, so does, is the city that goes to them and says, hey, I see a problem, because a mud district, I would think, the five elected, they're not going to volunteer, maybe, maybe they will, voluntarily go, hey, we got a problem over here, let's go spend a million dollars to rectify this, like, that's what my, that's where I was going to question.
Yes, can go, again, if you're impacting our facilities, we can go and say, bring us your attention, this is an issue that's causing damage to, or potential damage to public facilities that the city owns and you need to rectify them. And that's part of their agreement is to maintain those channels, which, you know, rut today, they've seeded it, what's been done, you start to see some grass being established and they will be maintaining it, mowing it in the typical kind of mud processes they do in fall. So it's like overseed and fertilization, fall and spring, to keep that grass established.
So if I read this map correctly, one of their lots are going to back up to, I think, Atkins Creek, is that the drainage system?
So none of their lots will directly back up to Atkins Creek, there's a property and a detention pond in between. So yes, it's part of the Town Creek watershed, it's one of the, the, the tributaries of Town Creek, but it's not Town Creek.
Okay, Chris, did you say they have a detention pond?
Correct, correct.
That's what I thought I saw in the plans, I, I couldn't catch that initially, you know, when I tried to look at it, because it was kind of off my page.
Correct.
And I, you know, and I, because I had a, had a kind of a misunderstanding because where I, in Houston, everything has to have a detention pond.
Correct.
But up here, I just recently learned that that's not necessarily true in Montgomery County.
Correct.
But they are putting up one, but I think it's still going to be right by the creek.
They do, so it's the, the southern portion, if you're looking at this exhibit here, the southern portion is the detention pond, there's a triangular piece of property and then Atkins Creek. So all of their drains will go through the detention pond and then will outfall into the channel that they constructed and all is waiting to Atkins Creek. And then the last item that was brought up at the last meeting was regarding traffic transportation, so the current status is Tech dot has approved their hydraulic analysis for the, their hydraulic impacts with Tech dot right away. They're going through, they've approved their traffic impact analysis and it's being routed for signatures for the addition of a left turn lane into the neighborhood. And all of that permitting is done through Tech dot, as a reminder, back, and I don't have the exact date, but earlier on, either earlier this year or end of last year, the city signed a letter of support for that road driveway connection, roadway connection.
What would be the timeline as far as getting that center lane?
It is contingent a part of their driveway, so them connecting to Tech dot, a requirement for them to do that of their permit is to construct the turn.
Okay.
So it's not a connect and sometime in the future, it's they're together, so their permit, in order to get their, their permit from Tech dot, they have to construct the turn.
When you say turn lane, you're saying middle, not just on the right?
Correct, yes, left turn lane, middle. Coming around that bend.
So, and based off of site plan, I'm assuming they have to construct the entrance first off before they can really build, just to get the trucks and stuff in there to build?
So they have a temporary construction entrance already, which is the long-term emergency entrance, the all-weather access road. It's a little bit further west on ten ninety-seven, and so if you, if you drive by there, there's a clearing today where the new road, the main entrance is going through.
But that would be the only access is temporary construction, they can't bring homeowners through the back way, whether it's continuing to build and sell and...
Correct, correct, it's a one-way in, one-way out.
Seems like you addressed those concerns, does council have anything else?
No, sir.
All right, entertain a motion for item eight.
Make a motion to approve the construction plans as submitted?
I'll second.
Motion by Casey, second by Carol, motion's debatable, amendable, requires majority vote, all in favor of approving item eight as stated, say yes.
Yes.
If you want to oppose, say no, and we will approve item eight as stated. Item nine, Mr. Allen, you have a recommendation, do I read first and then you make a recommendation, or how does that work?
I have a recommendation, we go into executive session before we talk about the site.
Okay, and so we're going to executive session at seven-thirty?
That would be pursuant to the...
So I got to go, oh, okay. Oh, okay. Excuse me.
It's 7:43 and we are back into regular section, session. Item number nine, consideration of a possible action on the proposed amendments to the approved Redbird Meadow Development Agreement.
Thank you Mayor, we have an existing approved agreement with Redbird Meadow. The developer is requesting you amend that agreement. He is here tonight with his team, I'd like to defer to him to go ahead and present to the council, we can go from there.
All right.
Thank you all very much. So just, my name's Annette Stevens, I know I've presented to you all before, I'm with ABHR representing Perry Sandin's development, we've got Micah with LGA, you've also met before, I will give you, Perry has hearing aid and is hard of hearing, so he has some difficulty hearing, so I may have to service his interpreter somewhat, he's asking me to speak up if you can. So, tonight, we'd like to go ahead and Perry wants to make a few opening remarks about his development. Thank you all very much for giving us the opportunity to speak here tonight. He has got a video that he is going to show you of his comparable development that has some of the proposed amendment terms in it. The five-foot setback being the most notable between the houses, which is the primary reason that we're here today, is to request some relief from the 10-foot setback requirements, but for a five-foot side setback. So, I'll let Perry start with some opening remarks, he's gonna show you all the video, I think that your city secretary has uploaded, and then I can go into both the original agreement and the amendment in more detail, but we basically want to have an open conversation with the council about some things that we can hopefully come to terms on. So, Perry?
Okay, thank you. Just, I'm gonna take about five minutes, really, I've been here two years, and unfortunately, it's really drug out, it's been very frustrating for me, very expensive for me, I know it's been frustrating for you guys who've gone through, I think, three mayors, three city councils, a couple of different, a lot of different staff members, and it's been difficult. What we set out to do was design a master plan community unlike anything you have in the city, and I think we've done that. What I've got today, and I know I've invited a few people personally to come look at McKenzie Park, which is a very special project for me, I won't get into why, it's emotional for me, and so I'm not gonna go there. It's in Spring, Texas, it's about a little over 200 acres, it's 385 lots, it is a master planned community, we have a rec center, pool, trails, a lot of lakes, big lakes with fountains, walking trails, and we have four different lot sizes, we have 60s, 70s, 80s, and 100s, and we even have a gated community within that section. We also, what's unique about it, is we have a major collector road that runs right through the middle of it. Redbird Meadows has a major collector that runs through the middle of it. And the way that we've done is all of our streets, with the exception of a major collector, are 24-foot wide. We don't have traffic problems, because you don't have people cutting through neighborhoods. You go in and you come out basically one-way. And it's a very clean, very well-run neighborhood, and it's a really nice community, and it has everything that I wanna put into Redbird Meadows. We'll have the trail, we'll have the open space, anyway, I've given two videos, hopefully one of them will work. And we can go too slow, but this is McKenzie Park.
Feel free to ask any questions as we go.
It's on Gosling Road, just south of the Woodlands. This is our, this is our main entry. Is the hair standing right away? All of these trees are planted. These are 60-foot lots.
With five, five-foot setback.
Yeah, five-foot, five-foot setback, so you're gonna be getting varying sides.
You wanna pause it right there, and back it up?
Sure.
I'll see the setback.
What happened, did you even count? There are everything else.
There you go, just right there. So, I don't have a tape measure, but I can count pickets.
What's that?
He can count pickets, he doesn't have a tape measure.
Those are 10-foot, those are 10-foot setbacks all day long.
That setback is greater than five feet.
Exactly.
The five-foot is the minimum, every house is in the same width, so the setback is a minimum of five. So some houses might be, if you own a 60 and you have a five, some houses, the normal width, the max width is 50. That puts five on each, a lot of homes are 45, 43, so you're gonna get varying widths on the setback, especially in a cul-de-sac. You're gonna get 15, 20 feet in between on a cul-de-sac, because the lots are the minimum at the front, so they have to set them back farther. So the distance is greater. Here, a little closer to 10.
You got one?
Mm-hmm.
Was it that one?
Yeah.
There was a skirt, yeah.
This is the gated section, these are 80s and 100s. On your left, there is a, you know, a 70, 80, a little bit. A rec center right there, but this is a street end, and those are 80-foot lots. Let's, the homes in here, over 1.7 million.
How old is this subdivision?
It's about seven years.
Thank you.
100-foot lots were slower because of the economy, because they went for a lot of money. They were up for 500,000 a lot, and that price came down, and Toll Brothers bought the last 20 in there, and they've sold every one of them contract to bill, ranging from 1.2 to 1.8 million dollars. This is a two-tiered length, this is on the 80s and the 60-foot, and it also backs up We put all these amenities in for only 385 homes. Once complete, this dirt here will tie into Springwood's Village. Now Harris County is about ready to make the connection, it'll go all the way to 45.
Those are 24-foot, the streets, the street widths?
The street width, the street width's 37.
For the major development, yeah.
In turn, you hear all 24.
24.
Is that it? Yeah. So Perry, you want to explain to council the financial ramifications when you have large houses with large setbacks on say 60, 70s, and 80 lots, and why, for our purposes, it's not feasible?
Let me kinda, I know you have kinda stuck on 10-foot minimum on each, it's five, so a 20-foot setback between the houses. What that does, and what we agreed to early on was a average 70-foot width. So if I take a 70, if I take a 60 and I put 20, 20 of it in setback, I now have to change my product. It's now a 40-foot wide home, which is a 50-foot product. So you're gonna take a 60 to a 50, a 70 to a 60, and an 80, and you're gonna increase lot cost by $13,750 each, on additional 10 feet for that lot. So if I keep my lot sizes the same, I can still maintain an average of 70-foot width, which we agreed to, but I gotta change my product, so that'll, so that'll fit the lot. So basically, I'm gonna lose about 80 million dollars in value, yes sir?
So, in your words, we agreed to a 70-foot lot at the very beginning, when you presented this and council signed off on it?
I'm sorry.
Yes, so you'll see on this what the original agreement was.
Right, so my question is, what was your product before? You knew your product before you made the agreement, correct?
He did, I think there was a misunderstanding as to the lot setback. So the five-foot lot setback is what is typical in.
I know, but it's in the agreement.
Yeah, so that's why we're here asking for a variance.
We submitted, yeah, we're asking for a five-foot, it's not five, five-foot minimum. And I also agree that we would, first of all, we need the 60s. We go, you know, 60, because that is gonna drive the minimum and velocity for our community. The reason I need them, we're on a railroad track, folks, I mean, it's 60 feet away. I can't sell a $750,000 home on railroad. So we got some conditions, existing conditions that are, that are preventative and restrictive as far as the album.
Can I ask another question?
Sure.
The railroad track was there when you made the original agreement?
Yeah, so, and I will add too, that the original agreement had a higher number of 60-foot lots, which he did intend to build that whole.
What we did, we said we'd maintain an average of 70, so we've got a mix of 60s, 70s, and 80s, to overall, and you blend that average at 70 feet, and that's the way it was designed. But I, after, during the fourth, I got with the engineer, and we have, I think, 69, roughly 60s in Phase 3, which is over in the larger sections, I asked, I asked Caleb to, let's just eliminate all the 60s on Phase 3. So we cut the 60s out totally, and there's, like, we lost 69 60s, but we picked up 70s and 80s. So we're gonna increase in value. But if I go back and I have to change my, what I build on the 60, 70, and 80, I'm gonna lose 80 million in AV. And what that does, it hurts me by about 10 or 12 million in potential reimbursements.
Absolutely.
I can't pay for all the amenities, I can't pay for the rec center, there's a lot of things that we can't pay for.
I have another question.
Sure.
The amenities, the ponds, the rec centers, were all in the original agreement?
Yes, still are.
Are what?
They still are.
In the original.
Absolutely, we're not cutting anything, I don't wanna cut one thing out of this.
I understand that, but you made an agreement, right? So we shook hands, we had a deal. And now, literally two months after we had a deal, oh no, I don't, I don't want that deal.
No, no, let me just clarify.
So to me, from perception, if you sat here for the rest of the meeting, perception is, the amendment was your plan from the start?
No, it was not, no it was not. So, so first of all, you know, obviously, market conditions change over the course of time.
In two months, two years ago, when things were still booming?
I don't think that we were in front of you two months with an amendment. Now, when land plans were being submitted, it came to everyone's attention that the setback requirements were gonna require more than a variance, and that, that's why we're here today, asking for a change in setbacks. As to the terms of the original agreement, you know, the district, the developer are committed to, you know, funding construction of the water line, the force made, we, you know, we're, we're funding all the utilities that we agreed and committed to do. The only real material change that we're coming back to the city for, and I will, I will tell you, in big master planned communities, it is not unusual to come back with variance requests for lot back sizes, I mean, lot sizes and setback requirements, as, it's a long-term development, as you know, it's not a, you know, six-month project. I mean, this project is a, almost a 400-acre development that, that may span the course of, you know, five, 10, 15 years, by the time it's eventually built out. And I can tell you in my experience, working with developers of large-scale communities like this, things get tweaked all the time from when the original development was agreed to. I, I do appreciate the fact that, that we, it is not the intent of the developer or the district to renegotiate the deal in any sense. And, you know, we petitioned the city for annexation, we still are committed to being a part of the city of Montgomery, obviously, and it's just, yes sir?
But with that comes risk, right? So I, granted, yeah, that's great, you're coming in, but you brought liabilities with you.
How is that?
We're being sued now because of your development.
Well, let me ask, I can address that as well, if you would like me to, is that, and if you want me to do it in open session, I'm happy to do that. Would you all want me to address the litigation in open session?
Alan?
Probably not a good idea to be talking about, you know, defense strategy and things like that.
Do you want me to give an update on where we are?
Well, let me, let me just, sure, but I will add that the, the developer did everything in accordance with state law, sir. He petitioned the PUC for decertification, and the state agency granted him decertification. We were in communication with the city attorney, city management, and council at the time. The, the law in the state of Texas is that a state agency's decision is valid until it is overturned by a state court. So, we are operating in accordance with state law, and, you know, we are working, or we, Perry, as the landowner, is working to, working to fight the on-fund litigation, and as you know, we've signed a indemnification agreement, and fully intend to cover legal fees associated with it, so.
I'll speak, you can back that, that's okay. Basically, where we are today, is CCN sued Redbird Meadows, we went to state, we went to the court, they filed, we got the annex from the PUC, so CCN, the CCN actually, we got decertified, right? And so the CCN basically sued the PUC, state. And so, we ended up filing a summary judgment against that case, and in March, early March of this year, the federal judge ruled in our favor, that there, and basically, he said there's no state, no federal law that can allow CCN to require us to give them money to build a plant or anything else, there's nothing there. And this, this law is regarding federal loans to CCN.
Yeah, I think you're familiar with that, yeah.
How do you?
Well, let's not talk too much about.
We understand the background of it, but my point is, is that, I know there's this big hoopla of, look what we're bringing, but look what you're bringing.
We're not going anywhere, we're fine.
Right?
We're not gonna quit.
Sure, well, if it, you know.
We're gonna try, next week, about two, one or two more journeys.
Yeah, let, yeah, let's, let's not talk about it, kind of litigation. But, that being said, I mean, you know, is the council's question as to whether or not you want the track to remain in the city? Is that, is that council's question? I mean, I guess.
Well, the whole thing just looks really strange from perception, right? So we, we have an agreement, yet that agreement is not good enough.
Well, we're asking for a variance on the setbacks, I mean, it's a minor, as far as.
No, the, the amendment is much, much more than setbacks, much more than setbacks.
Well, let's, yeah, let's talk about what the.
Okay, so if it was just setbacks and, oh yay, but it's, you've given nothing when we give you a counteroffer, it's your way to the highway, and I'm like, okay, we have an agreement.
Okay, so what, you know, lot counts, we can discuss that, road widths, and I've conveyed this to your, your council and your city manager, developer is flexible if that is, if that is a sticking point of the council.
We've actually made a trade, basically, we agreed to build a trail outside, if we got the variance inside. If you, if you don't want the trail, fine, we'll put the road back in like it worked. I mean, we got, I just showed you, community at work's just great, with 24-foot wide road, you didn't see as much of cars and everything else parked down the street.
I don't think roads are our issue. Roads are not our issue, especially, really.
That was one of the things we were worried about.
We're not worried about the road.
So what is, so what is the, other than the setback, sir?
That we have an agreement.
What is it?
If we've already decided on, so the council, whether it's this council or previous council, I mean, we've bought, we've bought the hog, we want the hog.
Well, we're trying to show you that you still have the hog, that you still have the benefit of the bargain.
Those numbers change so significantly.
The lot count sizes?
Lot sizes, the setback, the, even the road width, I mean, there were three areas, yeah, it's not as simplified as you're, as you're making it out to be, it's not.
Do you not want?
It's significant change.
Well, let's ask, let's, let's do this, so.
It's not, I want that community we agreed to.
Sure, so, I, I don't know if, is the concern that, so the large estate lots, I mean, Perry can address this, those, the market is not there at this time for Phase 3. Would the council be satisfied if we could agree to just sort of a first phase, and bite it off in pieces, if the council has concerns about the larger lots down the road? The, you know, the original agreement was, I guess, almost 47% of 60s were proposing, 25% 60s, were proposing 70s and 80s as opposed to the 85s and the 110s, which are still large lots. We can certainly talk about the, you know, obviously defer to Perry, on the, on the distribution of lots in later phases. I think the.
So that's, that's my other problem, right? So, okay, we agreed to this amendment, and now, in your own words, later phases, we're gonna change again.
Well, I'm trying to give us some, a mechanism of moving forward that is acceptable to the city, gives the community, gives them a community they can be proud of, and that allows the developer to move forward in, with a product that's marketable and feasible.
I just, I still have a hard time swallowing the pill of, we, we bought something, we agreed to it, and literally, it's not even the same neighborhood.
He's saying, well, he's saying that the neighborhood that they agreed to is significantly different from what you're proposing.
It's actually not, it's actually not. The lots are, the lots are smaller, there's more value created.
For whom?
I don't know if you've been watching.
For the city, for the city.
The price of homes are gonna rise. I mean, there is a limit of what people can pay in the city of Montgomery, it's in the Woodlands.
So the lot, overall value that the city would get is actually what, Perry, at full development, in taxes?
Yeah, it's broken, built out, we're projecting about 425 million in AV.
And that would be on the city's.
That's how many, a half, a million, three to eight and a half to the city. We're giving y'all our utilities, we're paying for that. You know, I just, I'm here, what I'm hearing from you is, you don't want a community in here, I can't hear the city, that's what I'm hearing.
What you're hearing is.
We have an agreement.
We have an agreement, and we're willing to call it that, no problem.
I, I don't think you want to hear.
I guess that's for setup, right?
I mean, like 40s, 45s, and 50-foot lots. I mean, the council didn't have any problem giving it a better answer.
Oh, on the contrary, I voted and cried and fought against those lots, and I lost, and I lost.
I'm confused, we're giving you something, we're giving you something we don't have in the city.
So the car value is about 410 million, based on the number of lots and the size of the 85s and 110s? So what you're saying right now, with these different sizes of lots, that you propose is about 425 million, so it is increased value, which is, I mean, tax, tax revenue for the city. It's 30% open space, no other community in there has that, even outside, look at the delves, look for something like that, not in that 30% open space. As far as the lot density, you know, it's well under 2, I think everything else is recently been approved, it's in a package, you see the 3s and 4s, very good, so. At that said, very similar product, which you agreed to, I think the biggest thing was, you know, in that ordinance before the agreement, yes, the 10-foot setback was not addressed at the development, I think yours were, they got it approved.
So, and, I mean, I, you know, I work a lot with, you know, seeing a plantation in Missouri City, I mean, we're on our, I mean, there's gotta be 11 amendments to the development agreement, I mean, the, the developer periodically changes product types, and, you know, based on what is selling, what is in the community, and in larger master planned communities, you're gonna have a variety of lot sizes. You know, depending on the size of the city, goes through P and Z primarily, and it, it never rises to the council's attention in, in a variety of cities. So, you know, every city operates a little bit differently, so. So, in your city, you all are the governing body of P and Z, and so, we're here again with development changes. It's, you know, I had, early on in the process, I had asked the engineer, "Could this just be handled through a variance request?" It was not my intent, or our intent, to have to come back, you know, every year with a development agreement amendment. This is a development change that, in most cities, would be just handled through a variance request through P and Z. So, that's why we're here today.
Okay. So, my last question is, when we suggested basically negotiations, let's give, let's take, we were shot down 100% on every one of them?
I'm not sure we were given what...
It just happened in the last week, so...
Well, so, we were never given formal terms. We were told that there was a request for, you know, frankly, I don't even have anything written. And what we had requested and have been given is workshop with the affected parties to sit down and talk through and work out a solution. We are certainly amenable to sitting down with those that are affected, whether it be a couple of representatives from council, whether you delegate to your city staff, and work through those details. So, Friday morning, I was given instructions that we need to have a signed indemnity before we could go any farther, which your attorneys forwarded me a, you know, we worked that morning on a draft, Perry signed it that afternoon. Your staff set up a meeting on Tuesday, or Monday, I guess, before 4th, and recommended that we come to a council workshop. And, you know, we were told that the council agendas are understandably busy, and this was the best format to do it. So, we would welcome the opportunity to sit down with council around the table to hammer through, get out maps, let's look at what works for both the city and the development.
And I would say over the last two months, as far as, yes, we received some kickback. We've added more 28-foot streets before of all 24. Additional ones was, again, the additional trail.
No, timeout. Original agreement, 28-foot, 36-foot?
I agree, I wanted to say, when we first presented the amendment change to pretty much the whole event, that's when we presented all 24. It was all, "Hey, you got to get some of that." So, that's when we gone back with it, considering, adding, correcting, and the whole load.
So, everything that we're looking at negotiating from is, the amendment is amendment. We're going to negotiate from the original?
Yeah, understood. But, we would welcome the opportunity to sit down with whomever you delegate, or whatever format you would dictate for us to talk through all of that.
We tried to get a workshop, multiple times.
Yeah. So, and I understand, and I understand there have been some ancillary issues.
Then, I'm going to give the detail, but we've been restricted also by, also before.
Yeah, that's it. So, here's my other thing. Up until, what, a meeting or two meetings about three weeks ago, I'd never seen a formal amendment. You all came and talked to us, but that was it.
Well, we made a presentation, and I don't have the dates in front of me, and...
October of...
Yeah. We've had, I think, intermittent conversations, as Perry alluded to, we've had, you know, understandably, change in manager, change in councils, we've made a presentation. I, the timing has been a little funny. I think council member Countryman is the mayor at our meeting where this was approved. Council changed. I think we came back in maybe January, and we had been working with your city attorney and the existing staff. We came and made a presentation to council about the amendment, and the city manager had not been involved, so we pulled back and were working with the city manager. And in the interim period, the CCN litigation arose, which, as far as we were told, put a brakes on everything. And we were told to stand down, and that's what we've been doing. We've honestly, we've honestly been attempting to work with council and staff to work through an agreement, and I understand there's been ancillary issues. We've come a couple of times, things have been considered an executive session, and we were told last, the last council meeting that we didn't need to attend, and then we were told that we needed the indemnity in order to proceed, which we have provided, and working on the surety this week. So, you know, we're, we would like to be, we would like for whomever is, you know, can make the decisions, the council level, to sit down and talk with those folks at the earliest opportunity.
I want to comment about the bond. We were asked, turned in the FIAC. We said, "We'll be happy to get a bond."
You offered.
We worked through the 4th of July, getting everything approved. Our bond was approved yesterday. They asked for a form. We called the city to get the form. They don't have a form, or I'd have the bond in my hand tonight to give you. So, I can shoot you an email showing you where the bond's been approved. We sent out financial statements and everything, guarantee agreements from our partner, our sales, and our wives. So, we worked hard to get this bond, and we're ready to get it once we get a form. So, we requested one from the bond company, and if that's suitable, I can have the bond here hopefully by Friday. We're doing everything we said and more. I'm really, and still, I'm upset. I mean, we've got millions of dollars spent, and I can't redo everything. I can't. I'd rather walk away, do something else, leave the city, and do something else. I really am. I'm at that point.
Well, let me ask you, what would be, what would be your council suggestion as to a workable, small group to address what your counteroffer is?
I'm not going to speak for the council, but I think we're pretty comfortable where we are, so why would you want a counteroffer? We all are the ones wanting to counter, right?
We're requesting a variance, yes. But, I was going to say, you know, we're trying to understand, I guess...
So, where are we meeting, the middle, although we've already met in the middle?
Well, so, what you're trying to get us to do is come off the original agreement and make an amendment to your amendment, but you've already told us when we tried it, "No, this is it."
Let me, let me ask this question. Is there, is there any leeway on the tenant? Could we split and say, do seven and a half on each side? That's not as painful. You're still going to get more than seven, you're going to get, that's a 15 feet between. You're still going to get more than 15 because houses, they're going to be different. I can tell you, drive to a community, they're not all the same.
All right, so I'm going to throw this from the hip. How many floor plans, how many house floor plans?
How many, how many house floor plans do you have?
All six buildings.
Right now, I have six builders. I have two builders on each lot, and they'll probably have four to five different plans, and probably three different elevations for each plant. And these are production builders. Weekly, Perry, Trees on 80s, Tom Cox, who builds out there, he's one of the 80s. I bet you some great builders coming in here. These are Full T, Caesar, those kind of builders. Now, if I'm forced to go with 10, you're going to get those other kind of builders. You're going to get them. I have no choice.
Right to that.
I can't build a Williams product if I, I mean, I'm already over lot prices right now for us, with all the amenities and improvements we have to do. We're going to build almost 1,500 per foot. Right now, we're 14.25 per foot. And if I add another five feet, that adds another $6,500 per foot to the lot. There's a number of guys, I mean, that's all it is.
You know, I think that if you talk about how it come into a table, bring the surety bond, because I know your surety company has a farm, even though the city, most cities don't have their own farms. Galveston is one of those few that do. But, bring the surety bond, and sit down and see what we can do.
Well, we have, we'll ask them again. They ask, the insurance company asked us for a form, but we will ask today.
I write surety bonds, and I know most companies carry their own farm.
Okay, we will, we will ask.
I'll probably get one tomorrow.
Yeah, and we were trying to...
And I'll send it over here.
I mean, honestly, councilwoman, we had, we were trying to defer to the city and use the form that they preferred. I mean, that was the intent today. Perry just got his insurance approved, and I reached out asking if there was a form that the city attorney approved of.
If it's an A-plus bonding company, I'm sure the city would approve of their forms that those...
Good to know.
If that's something that's vital for you, I'll deliver a personal check up here tomorrow and you can hope for a number of others. Next, I saw?
I'll have a surety bond.
Ask about the seven and a half again. Because I'm good with that.
Yes, I'm good with the seven and a half as well.
Because he offered that.
So, if we have a sit-down, how soon, how soon can we?
How soon can you do it, Perry? If they have a sit-down?
You bring the bond, and we'll talk.
Right.
I'm happy to sit down. I mean, I'd love to have a roundtable like you guys had today. I'm happy to.
Okay. How soon?
How soon?
I'm here when you're ready, whenever you're ready.
Gary, how soon?
We have to call for a special workshop.
Seventy-two hours.
Seventy-two hours.
Seventy-two hours.
So, next week?
And that would give them plenty of time to get the surety bond.
Yes.
So, next week, can we do one?
Yeah, I'll read back to you guys, just about your schedules, and we'll try to find a day that works for the week. It's almost time for a workshop, this one I have.
Yes, just this one thing.
Can we have a special meeting? Is that possible?
That's what he has with him.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's what it would be.
We'll try.
We have a timeframe per the state that we have to...
We have to give them 72 hours.
Seventy-two hours, so they're talking now.
We won't be on Saturday.
Or any date next week when everybody's available.
So, we can put it out this week.
Okay.
So, as soon as we can get...
We'll make ourselves available.
Have a good one. You guys good?
I think we will make ourselves available, yes.
Okay. Okay. Y'all got it worked out? All right? Everybody good?
That would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Very nice of your time. See you next week.
Yes, we will.
All right, so no action on nine, this discussion. So, we go back into executive session. In compliance with section 551.01, ETSQ dot Texas government code to win, this will be sections 551.071, consultation with attorney, Town Creek, Atkins Creek Hydrology update issue. Alan, is that good there? All right, it is 8:25, we're into an executive session. All right, it is eight twenty-five, we're into an executive session.
It is 9:17. We are returned from executive session. Are there any motions or anything? We don't have any motions.
No action taken.
All right, no action from that council inquiry.
No, just a reminder on our TABC liquor license policy, just so we look at getting it fixed so it's easier to use. Just a reminder.
And again, Carol is giving pre-rides on the golf course.
Oh my god, come on.
So Chief, if you wouldn't mind just looking the other way while we all go home.
I do have a question.
Okay, question.
Originally, we used to give a Texas flag out when they opened a water account. Is that still happening?
I'm not sure.
Yeah, so it's like a welcome for the citizens. We're birthplace of the Texas flag.
We used to give a new account, they got a new flag.
They get a new flag.
We should have a stack of them right here. I didn't know that was still happening.
That's a good idea.
Can I, yeah.
Five dollars Carol.
Kind of like my golf course. My grandfather did.
The secretary is supposed to sing the Star Spangled Banner for them.
No, the Texas.
The Texas flag, that'll be gone.
There should be somewhere, Dave, you probably know where there's the stack of those flags.
I know where the flag is.
Oh, okay, okay.
Because we've been selling.
Yeah, we sell them, yeah. The water account.
They've been selling pretty good.
They've been selling.
I just thought I would bring, I didn't know if they were still giving out, but I was going to ask for that because I've been out here. Typically, people would come up and say, oh, thanks for the flag.
All right, I entertain the motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
And we have a second. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
And it is 9:19-ish.